Less than one-third of the tax and COVID-19 operations. This article down the page is the select of the council, the town leaders accuse of unnecessary expenses. We as the council approve the budget for the municipality, and it's said that the department heads for sure they do not exceed that budget. After being accused of overspending, how we decide to begin a new budget review of the expenditures in the schedule and public hearing. During that meeting, all department heads showed that they were all under budget. These department heads did all they can to keep their expenditures down. To last year, the department heads, we need some of those, what's our ways to acquire at low enough for the cost of the town? I believe recently they acquired the tanker truck for the fire department, had no cost of that except to be to give the truck before Fairfield. Again, keeping the cost of the budget. With the loss of our ambulance services, the town had other avenues to supply services to the citizens. That was part of the start of our own, that was the start of our own ambulance service, along with the availability of firefighters during a daytime hour for trying to try to hire firefighter paramedics. This would be the greatest service to the citizens. And we are fortunate not only to hire some fire paramedics, the town was able to acquire some instructors with that hire, which saves the town some training expenses. The late old, the late old Wayne of that and services to citizens is the distance general. I'll give you an example. My tax bill for 2020 was 1380.47. Of that amount, 9415 went to the county, 85713 went to the school, and 42919 went to the town. Well, I'm 65 and need services more, and need services more than do the school. If I had mercy, I'd want to get more happy to go to ambulance, rather than a bus to take me to the hospital. Well, a question, Mr. Council, we got 25% from our taxpayer. How will the council live when we control less than one-third of that tax distribution? Our real rate is not set until we receive a bill from the school. In understanding law, we cannot reject any amount that they request. Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Feel free to say it.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Armstrong, resident of Fort Fairfield. During the January break of this county council meeting, I spoke regarding fairness, specifically on land evaluation of my property in Fort Fairfield, and I just quoted the reference of a couple others. And I wanted just to kind of really review that quickly with you because it's, evaluation to me, just for the four properties that are stone throw from my property, 94 Prescott Street, there's no consistency in how this reevaluation was done. Let me give you some examples. My property on 94 Prescott Street, I have 4.6 acres. That's been evaluated for $15,000 a year for the last 19 years. The first year that I purchased the property was evaluated at 12. After the reevaluation, the same 6 point, the same 4, 4.6 acres was reevaluated at $47,400. From $15,000 to $47,400. That's a 216% increase on my land for less than an acre. My neighbor, Grayden Richardson, which is, and these are all boroughs of buildings, 95 Prescott Street, we're talking land value, he owns half my acre. His evaluation before the reevaluation was valued at $12,800. After the reevaluation, his property, the land value is $12,400, went down $1,200, approximately a 3% decrease. My neighbor at 102 Prescott Street, Wayne Turkey, owns 43,4 acres. His evaluation before, before the reevaluation was $12,000. After the reevaluation, it went from $12,000 to $24,000. That's a 100% increase. The other building, which is, used to be the dollar store building, is now empty. Before the evaluation, and this is 1.84 acres, the evaluation for that property was $34,500. After the reevaluation, it is now evaluated at $49,500, 143% increase. We're talking land value. I see no consistency at all in how this evaluation was done. A few years ago, and we're talking two or three years ago, a acre of land, a commercial property, was approximately $12,000. Today, I don't know what it is at the reevaluation value today, but if I take my property, my property would be worth $79,000 if I owned an acre of land. That's the biggest increase. Wayne Turkey's property would be worth about $70,000 if he owned it. So I do not see the fairness in this at all, as an inconsistency at all. And I said this is a commercial property. Those are the four properties in my acre. And I can just imagine throughout the rest of Fort Fairfield, I'm sure there's many, many more inconsistencies. During the January town council, I brought this up, and I wish I had the response to this, the question, why, why is this highway like this? I have not received the response yet. I'm hoping after this meeting, I will. And I'm wondering right now, what is the periphery evaluation cost for an acre of commercial property? So again, I mentioned the problem in January is that I don't believe due diligence was taken into consideration. I know that the town has expenditures, but at the same time, I believe very strongly that should be done in fairness with those taxes. I also believe that we've got to balance the books. Government is not, it's definitely like a business. Government has no revenue, so it depends on its citizens, of course, expenditures, and I hope that the books are being balanced. And I'd like to say as well as many others, where is money, where are things being spent, truly being spent? There's a lot of places where costs can be cut, things can be done deftly, and I just hope that council members will do due diligence in this. A lot of people behind me tonight that are fully ready, it's going on. So I'm here to support every one of you, and we have a problem. You still have a problem, it's not resolved. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Jeff.
Can I have a little longer, two minutes, we'll actually go, because I never like, you never interrupt us. We keep our comments down to two minutes, please. I'm only six at a time, I'm saying you guys are all exactly, but the last meeting, I believe is February 16th, correct?
Seventeenth.
What?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seven.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay. Everybody think that's here, if you remember my story about leaving for, leaving out during this COVID, and was going to be in the best bargaining position, and it wasn't. What was the first day of the meeting? What was your first day of the meeting?
This is probably not for the country.
The 20th. So the 20th, right after that meeting, and I told you, we should have gotten probably the biggest increase ever, and we didn't get anything. February 20th, and my speech to you guys was kind of, the real world, you have to accept things, and sometimes you have to make tough decisions. The 20th, it became awful, was what? Roll over. So as our costs go up, taxes go up 25%, tires go up 25%. I don't know, anybody, if anybody here is familiar with steel prices? Steel prices are going out of the wood. Adam Boober in Lawwood, and companies like Spudnik, can't quote equipment out more than five days right now. And if you want it, you have to order right now and put the down payment on it. So as our expenses keep going up, we're going to have to toe the line. We just started some Randy's man, and in that figure that I told some of you guys, I forgot the fans to think about, that this coming year, Randy's taxes, our portion of it is going to be, so it wasn't just the $12,000 of ours, I got Randy's total figure, and it is almost $11,000 more his one. That is going to be split three ways between us, Smiths, and my two nephews, and I didn't quite divide it up, and maybe I could have thought about it, because the deal isn't 100% who's taking what, get signed and everything. I would say if you wanted that to be last item, probably it's after 12 to 20, and it would be like 40 and 40 between our family and my nephew's family. In that total figure, so instead of our taxes just going up $12,000, if you take, well, call it an even 10, it's 3300, that's almost 15 grand right there just in taxes in town of Fort Fairfield. Fort Fairfield is only about a third of our acreage. And we're getting told, roll over, the acres we're going to pick up from Randy, we're going to go from about 2,600 acres to about 2,900 acres, and make the exact same gross with the, with the cost increases. That means we have to make tough decisions and work harder, work harder than we did when we were kids, just to keep your head above water. And I think when these department heads, they need to figure out that the world is real sometimes, and that sometimes, if you have a little kid that keeps wanting something, and you keep giving it to them every time, guess what happens? They're never going to stop asking for it. Thank you.
Please state your name, race, and residence, and state your name.
My name is Jennifer Gensel, and I'm a resident and a taxpaying resident for the last 15 years. I've heard people complain their taxes increasing, and at the same time saying there's no services here. You do have services. You have two fully staffed and trained ambulance units, a well-trained fire department, you have a police department of exceptional officers, you have a community pool, a fantastic recreation department, a lovely library, and you have a great public works department, to name just a few. We need new businesses to come here, but what new business is going to want to come here if we do not have any ambulance service for their employees, or a fire department and a police force in town to protect your business? None. I've heard a statement made, small businesses don't help our revenue, but small business can grow, and they encourage bigger businesses and people to move here, and there are new people moving here, COVID has helped that. I've heard people saying the town should be run like a business, but that is not what a town does. A business runs to make money for their owners. That is not what town economies are. Towns provide services to their communities to enhance their way of life and its safety, to increase business and resident opportunities. Offset some expenses, yes, but it's not meant to be.
Please, Keith, give me a moment. As the taxes have been going up here too, when you look around town, and the business owners, and what's really going on, who's going to be here to support the town in the next 20 years? I'm 30, I'll be 30 years old here in May, and I'm not sure as if there's another business owner, you know, that we might, you know, so who's going to grow old with me in this town and kind of help and support, you know, the town? So, that's all. All right.
My name is Gary Sirway, I'm a citizen of Fort Fairfield, former town council member, and somewhat interested in what's going on in town. First of all, let me commend Mr. Smith for providing us with the citizen with this information in the journal of the impact of the taxes on certain people. Secondly, let me recommend that the town invest in the public arrest system and hear it, you know that. And thirdly, hopefully that council members recognize that there's some interest in this town, what's going on with the assessment, with the taxes, with the spending. I know this is not the time to talk about the budget, we'll talk about that in April, but hopefully you people, five of you that make decisions for the residents, hopefully you're listening to the comments and take it at heart, and take it home, do your homework. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Avery.
My name is Kevin Palagier, resident of Fort Fairfield, I'm 65. I've seen that the climate is down. I've seen it grow. I saw it grow in 87, I built our west, it's a gold construction apartment, but I've not seen this town grow. I've seen it named Helen Green, Gulf Food, Fort Fairfield, we've got an industrial park on the roads, and the worst one, nothing's been done, and I can hold this stuff, you want to get it down, nothing's been done there. I've got some law money out there, and I've been buying it, and nothing's been done. I've got passes that I can double, I have here for Fairfield, and you guys have to understand something. We people want you guys to, she works for you, you go work for her. You need to understand that. You go love her, the food's getting better, I mean, the lines getting longer, the system going all the way. We need to do something. You start with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to share a little bit with the town. We understand that we are in a transition to trial time, but right now, what's happening with our community and with the revow is something that's been shared through time already, it's necessary. Some information that you guys are hearing is not quite accurate. What we read in papers is not quite accurate, and I want to make sure that we do not draw conclusions based on assumptions or some comments that are made that weren't accurate. We do understand our position in the town council, we know that you guys selected us, and we are trying the best that we can to do our job, trying the best that we can to make things right for everybody, but at the same time, we understand that our town manager is doing the best that she can to do the job that she does. It's not an easy job. She has to be in charge of all the departments, making sure everything flows the way it's supposed to. I would encourage you to be careful, and let's bring a healing to our community, at the same time giving us the ability to work, but it needs to be work instead of pointing fingers and accusation at us to comment and hurt each other's, because this will never fly right if we do that. We've lived in a world in the last year or so, or maybe four, five years, where pointing fingers is just drawing division, and we don't need division in Fort Fairfield anymore. And so I just want to challenge you with that. So give us the ability and the opportunity to work together and not listen to what other people assume that they're doing or not doing. Thank you.
So I don't usually say a whole lot, but I do want you guys to know that we are listening, we're listening to your comments, we're listening to your concerns, we care, we'd like to, you know, help to rectify the situation that you feel like we're currently in, where it feels like it's us against everyone else. That's not what we want, that's not what's intended. I think that's come again from a lot of misinformation, but if you do have questions, I know that, you know, Jeffy said, I expect the answer to my question. If you have a question, come to the town office, speak to the people who are doing this every day, people that know the most about all of the information that you're seeking. If they can't give you the answer, or if you don't feel comfortable with the answer, come to us, you know, we can work with them, we can work with you, but, you know, there's like the assessors. If you have a question about the rebound, speak with the assessor, go over it, just to see, maybe you won't come to the same agreement, you know, maybe they will still be high, or you won't agree with what they say, but that's a good starting point, and I think that we all need to be willing to work on this together versus just pointing fingers. So just know that we hear you, we're trying, I know that I am willing to put as much time and energy in as it takes, and I think that all of our council members, our town staff, we're all trying to do your thing, but pointing fingers, giving out this information is just not helping anything. So if you have questions, if there's anything that I can do, please feel free to reach out, and again, start with the town office.
If I can, a lot of the misinformation is real. I think there's a fair amount of errors in this rebound, I don't think I know. And a lot of times, we got to look at one thing, and I know I was taught, grew up on a farm, I think farming industry brought Fort Fairfield where we are today, that hadn't been for the years we've had in the past, I don't know where Fort Fairfield would be today. My hats off to the hard workers and farmers that, that put the job, and to give us what we got, it's changed today. But the biggest thing that we got to look at is, we can talk about a problem for weeks and months to come, but we got to look at a problem and we got to fix it. That's a start. May it be one, two, three at a time, but the biggest thing that I see and I hear is the stories from everybody, and I take it quite seriously, just like we all, but there is some issues. I've had people come to me and show me, I've read them, I've seen the differences between the valuations, and I can honestly say that if you put your facts together, that you have contact a rebound company, they will fix them with you. They will do it. I've experienced it personally, and, but we, we as a community have to look at what we're doing, and nothing comes easy, nothing's ever come easy in Fort Fairfield. We've had what hard work we've gotten, and I know none of us are quitters. I know deep in my heart, under every one of us are fighters, and we will make this work. We will make it work, and they were not just words. You've got my word, selected by you people, that I'm going to do everything that I can do to fix everybody's problem on my own, because we, as citizens of Fort Fairfield, we have to make this work, because I want to turn around 25, 30 years from now and have something to enjoy for my children, and you do too. And, and, you know, I've had an opportunity in the past couple weeks over different subjects that came about that I didn't expect or plan on, and I had a lot of people, not just in the state of Maine, but from other states in the United States. And I can tell you right now, where it's called for Maine, people will come to Fort Fairfield. I've never, I'd never would have felt the input from Southern Maine and other states in the United States, and we're talking from Alabama, Missouri, we're a shining star in their eyes, and you know what? I don't think, I would see us or you people, what people see in us, and I'm proud of what we've got. And we go, we got a problem, let's just, let's just fix it. That's the first step. Thank you.
It's heartbreaking to be a citizen of Fort Fairfield for as long as I am, and then businesses now, and I get worked out, I apologize, but to see the town go in the direction that it is, it's heartbreaking. I want to see, I want to see Fort Fairfield grow, we all want to see Fort Fairfield grow. You guys want to see Fort Fairfield grow. It's, come on, this means it's a kid, just like I did. You see a lot happen in Fort Fairfield, take place in Fort Fairfield, see them go down and going. I want to see your problem, I really do, I want to see Fort Fairfield grow. And nobody else will, Fairfield, I told my people, I stayed here for once, I did, if I didn't, I wouldn't have your want, I, I'm going to see Fort Fairfield, I don't want. And, you know, this is serious business, we've been all those folks who are concerned, they're not here because they're not concerned, they're here because they are concerned. Like I said, the crowds getting bigger, lines getting longer, you know, we've got people talking about selling homes, selling, tearing homes, folks tearing the barns down because they get, want to be attached, so people talking about, we're going to have to sell up, I don't want to be a little Fort Fairfield, I'm going to be here. This is, this is serious stuff, it affects people, I'm very personal with it. Right, well, you may change it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I spent 15 years in what I've said where you are. And none of the work made you any more difficult than this possible year. And my hat's off to you. It's a tough time. We've got hard things to do. I'd like to give a little bit of history of what I recall, how we got a budget, et cetera. Every year, we'd have a day, sometimes two, like 3:00 or 9:00, through the hearing, listen to the different departments explain why they were asking for what they were asking. And we'd scrutinize it. We'd roll it. We'd try to pare it down as much as we could, being the council. After that was done, okay, with that information, a budget was prepared, it was scrutinized some more. It was presented to the council for further scrutiny. Then it was public hearing. And then the council approved the budget, which I think probably hasn't changed in the method by a whole lot. Maybe I'm off on a move. We might have changed things in the last five years. So the council approved the budget. And then the mill rate was set. So mill rate is the easiest thing in the world to figure out. You take the total available assessed taxable value of the town. I think $184 million in my hand, doesn't matter. And you divide it by what the council has deemed necessary for a budget. Now, you could argue whether that is necessary or not. But they've got a budget. They've done it as legitimately as they could do with what they have for information. So you divide the total value of the town by the money that the town needs to raise to run itself. Schools, Sheriff's Department, County, and the town. So there you've got a mill rate. We're going to use 20.5. 20.5. That's it. There's no argument. Then only I think it is, send it into the state. This is our evaluation. This is our budget. And the state has a little window that says, if you guys really, if you guys really want to raise that a little bit more than that you can, or if you want to drop it a little bit, and I know you're almost at the bottom level of that range, the state is not dictating what our mill rate is. That's done by your unit evaluation, divided by what we set for a budget. So then the revow. And supposedly, when I was on here 15 years and I was part of, oh, we don't have, we don't, we don't want to do a revow, we don't want to do a revow. And I was part of the problem. And nobody really spoke. We've had a couple or three town managers, and it never really was bushed. It's something we had to do because the state was starting to dance for not having done. It was costing this town money in state funds because we didn't do it. So I applaud you for having the guts to do it, to get it done, to vote to have it done. Now, every town in the state, when you mention revow, they just shiver. Trust me, they do. And almost everybody's property is more valuable today than it was 20 years ago. That's the bottom line. Just about everybody's is. An assessor comes in, an assessor, a professional person that is supposed to make it 100% of that, meaning that my house, when I look at my assessment, that should be where I could get out of it if I put it on the market. Now, if I wouldn't sell my property for what it's evaluated at, I'm in the deal. Because I'm going to pay taxes, I'm unforcible. Okay? So that's, that's the revow numbers. So I guess I applaud you. I just wanted to throw that out there as a history and somebody that's not looking to complain, just somebody that has been where you are, understands the process. And I reiterate what has been said before. We are in this together. We've really got to go through it. If you have a problem with your assessed value, there are avenues to go with it. If there are errors, errors, if they think you've got a seller and you haven't, that's an error. If they think you've got three vehicles and you've only got two, that's an error. Okay? And those are all correctable things. So I thank you for your time. I know I've only got two minutes, but thank you very much.
Good evening. I won't take too long with this. I'm Fred Everett, live over on Mel Street. And on one of my trips home from work the other morning, I heard on the radio, on the news, about some work the Council of Phil Collins was doing to make Fort Fairfield a Second Amendment sanctuary town. And I wanted to take this moment and offer a big thank you for your efforts and thank everybody for the help you've supported during this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can we open our corresponding reports?
As of March 17th, 2021, we have not received any license renewals. We received February revenue sharing in the amount of $53,268.58 on February 22nd, 2021. Total revenue sharing received to date is $338,947.8. This puts us at 71.69% of budget versus 66.67%. We are now $23,748.05 over our budgeted amount. Checking account balance as of February 28th, 2021 is $2,235,835.69, which includes a promissory note with AWS and Metchia Savings Balance of $5,000. Total expenses at the end of February were 64.27% versus 66.67% budgeted. Total revenue received was at 80.18% versus 66.67% budgeted. Expenses are 2.4% under budget and revenue was 13.51% over budget. Total excise tax collected in February was $38,512.18. State revenue sharing, $53,268.58. Real estate and personal property taxes collected, $973,309.32. In comparison, 2019 unpaid tax bills as of February 28th, 2020 were $619, for a total of $809,441.1. 2020 unpaid tax bills as of February 28th, 2021 were $561, for a total of $765,708.52. Our 2020 tax collections are much better than they were for the same period of time last year. Loan balances as of February 28th, 2021, Jones Fuel, $1,680.63. Lineman number 5275, $18,616.63. And Lineman number 5277, $6,699.37. 2020 real estate taxes collected as of March 17th, 2021 is $3,090,257.35 compared to 2019 real estate taxes collected as of March 17th, 2020 of $2,595,131.52. This shows an increase in collections to date of $495,125.83. In comparison, 2019 unpaid tax bills as of March 17th, 2020 were $540, for a total of $678,561.94. 2020 unpaid tax bills as of March 17th, 2021 were $477, for a total of $624,395.25. Our 2020 tax collections are much better than they were for the same period of time last year. We have 63 more bills paid for 2020 for the same period.
AWS?
Mr. Raja.
Good evening, councils. Our last AWS meeting was on February 26th. It really was the first of the year, so we didn't have much of a budget to look at for what we do in January. We were ahead scheduled on the budget to the chair degree. We have had a scale problem at the Prescott Land that we had to attend to in January. But the cost for that were all in our contingency funds for those scales. Those scales haven't been addressed since 2014. They see a lot of weather, a lot of salt in the winter time. When we corrected the problem there, we hit some things to eliminate the salt and get down these scales. Much like we did at Ada Pit at Trucking Landfield last year, we did our own scales. We landed a new customer for the first time in many, many years. We have a good contract with customers. It's a small customer for the Bay area, but it is $50,000 in revenue associated. Just so that you know, Mark and his team are working hard to resolve this problem, as we told you. Mark gives us a legislative update every month, and one of the things that came up for us to review, and we've commented on, we said, there's legislation in the state legislature right now to remove the BN plastic bags, the parts you nationally put in place. So Mark gave us a heads up for that, and we've asked him to make some comments on the public record for us, showing that this has an absolute problem across the land. They have both bags here. We legislate, have legislation staying in place. One other change that we want to make to towns aware of is that the main DEP requires a report from each town every year for what we do, for what's going into every state with the landfills. Up until this year, Mark has done this for all of our customers, including all of its communities. The state's new mandate says that we have to do that ourselves. Mark is often able to do most of the paperwork for us to review, but it's something that you guys will be seeing once that comes out, to go to the DEP. It's just to keep tabs on how much we're bringing in this town. So we won't see any extra real work that aren't, but a little technical review of Thorson's submit. That's all I have, something to do. Thank you very much.
All business.
Mr. Carl Young began with the Fort Fairfield Planning Board July 1st, 2007, and through his outstanding contributions and leadership to the community of Fort Fairfield on the planning board, he was able to have a significant impact on the lives of our citizens. Mr. Young helped to author our current planning board bylaws and shoreline zone ordinance, providing many valuable thoughts and ideas to the improvement and safety of our town. Mr. Young was the chair of the Fort Fairfield Planning Board from August 16th, 2016 to November 25th, 2020. We are grateful for his dedicated service to our community and its citizens. The recommendation is that council votes to accept the proclamation, Mr. Carl Young, for outstanding service to the town of Fort Fairfield. Mr. Young, would you, would you like to say something?
If I may, I'm currently young, and I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the council for the recognition here tonight. I had the opportunity for many years to serve the citizens of Fort Fairfield. It was my pleasure. I had the pleasure of working with four town managers, latest being Andrea. That was just interesting, shall we say. Had the opportunity to work with Billy Joe and Tony over here extensively, and various other folks in town. And I just began wanting to say thank you and tell you that it was my pleasure to serve the citizens of Fort Fairfield.
Councilwoman Libby has requested a date change for the April council meeting to be moved to Tuesday, April 13th at 6:00 PM. Recommendation is that council votes to accept the proposed date and time change for the April council meeting to Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. It is with great honor and respect that I share with council the letter I received from Main Town and City Clerks Association regarding the certified clerk of Maine status for our town clerk, Ms. Billy Joe Sharp. Ms. Sharp has served the town of Fort Fairfield and the public for 10 years this past August with honor, dedication, loyalty, and passion. For the past 10 years, she has proudly served her community with various jobs as town clerk, deputy clerk, deputy tax collector, deputy treasurer, registrar of vital statistics, records management officer, general assistance director, and most recently has taken on the role as our website and social media coordinator, and all with the greatest of integrity. Ms. Sharp's years of service, growth, and respect that she has earned from our citizens, department heads and staff, elected officials, and myself, is because of the love she has for her public service and for the community of Fort Fairfield. It is often said that the office of the town clerk is the gateway to local government, and this proves to be true in the town of Fort Fairfield. She drives, strives daily to help make our town a better place, which has often been done without much recognition. While there are far too many to name, other noteworthy credentials and accomplishments not tracked by the classes she attended for certification, Ms. Sharp has developed various in-house forms that help track daily registration fees for better streamlined end-of-day procedures. She's received recognition during council meetings for her helpful information and postings for our citizens. Delivers and performs town duties and services for our elderly and shut-in citizens. Customer service to our citizens, staff, council, and myself is her top priority. Often works long hours to complete all tasks on a moment's notice. Developed a mail-in form to allow our citizens to continue to reregister their vehicles through the stay-at-home order. Ms. Sharp has always been helpful and dedicated to serving the citizens of the town of Fort Fairfield with her dedication and work ethic that she brings to the job of town clerk, and always willing to go the extra mile in service to her community and beyond. My recommendation is that council joins me in congratulating Ms. Billy Joe Sharp and her designation as a certified clerk of Maine.
It would bring me great honor to move this motion to the chairman. Second. I have a motion. Second. A discussion. The Joe, you're doing a great job. When the license, I watched you in the town office and make sure that I mentioned the rest of this.
Thank you. Main DOT along Sucee Corner on Forest Avenue. Mr. Roger Sucee of the Main DOT is here this evening to discuss the public work on Forest Avenue that will be taking place this summer. Mr. Sucee will have handouts for council to review at the council meeting. Recommendation is council hears Mr. Sucee's presentation.
Let's say, evening, council, and thank you for having us. I'm Roger Sucee, lead partner of creation. I'm doing Chris Heskey. Chris is a project engineer, lead designer, and I'm senior project manager. Our local office here in Prescott. Our local office here in Prescott. So we're just here to share a large culvert project that's going to take place on Forest Avenue, and just kind of, I'll give you a brief overview of the project, and you press for more details. So, like I said, it's a large culvert project, it's on Forest Avenue, and just kind of give you some particulars about exactly where that project is located. There's a farm road, it's called Mallory Drive, sits in this low sag project, actually, that farm road is essentially another project. Another way to describe that project is about one mile north of Bryant Pond Road. That's a general location. The department, the, as these are projects, they have a home house, they have little camps, it's a smaller business replacing the pipe in this circumstance. It's a little bit more than that, actually reconstructed about five, six hundred feet of road, and we're also going to do a seven day detour. So that's why I found the department to present the project with them. So what the project is, currently, there now is a three-foot culvert. A three-foot culvert is, hearing is a design life, design life on a culvert that's turned around sixty, seventy years, and it's at that point. So we're looking to replace that culvert, and like I said before, we're also looking to rebuild approximately six hundred feet of road, I think it is. And in addition to the pipe, hearing is declining. The road has had turns, is historically overtopping. I think it's very long. I remember, apparently, it's very long, two thousand twelve, twelve to twelve, there were people that had these heavy summer rain events, that culvert actually backed out, overtopped, washed out shoulders, things like that. In general, that's, like I said, Chris will go with the details of the actual construction of the project. As far as schedule goes, the department's looking to advertise this project over this year, and it will be constructed next summer. Because this project is in the stream, we have to provide the wetland rules, some of those in that. Terms when the project can start, that date is twelve fifteen. Project will actually start here around twelve fifteen. It'd have to be totally completed by October first. That's the general window of construction, but we're going to only last the project for forty-five days. This project, so within that seven days, they'd have a seven day detour. They could choose to move that, keep that window around that forty-five days. In addition, they could choose to start that project anytime after July first, as long as they get it done by October first, as within that forty-five days. That's just a general overview of the project. Like I said, Chris has given you all his typical detail plan, his line of detour. I'll let him just kind of through, explain the details. Construction of that detour, and then the detour's detail plan, and then we'll be waiting for questions.
Thanks, Roger. Roger said, Chris Heskey, civil engineer in the Main DOT, at Prescott. Just to go over the details of the detour, if you can, just be all in front of me. In general terms, a very straightforward detail, the detour, Roger, utilizes Bryant Pond Road, section one A, section one sixty-seven, and the downtown piece of one sixty-one, who essentially closed Forest Avenue through traffic for the duration of seven days. The project is located about a mile north of Bryant Pond Road, and it's also adjacent to a farmer that I believe is named either Mallory Road, Mallory Drive, which is essentially the northernmost of the project. There are two residences that sort of bracket the limits of work. If we do close the road, those residences will obviously still have access to emergency services, they can still come and go. The essence of the detour is that through traffic, it will be restricted for seven days. It is a relatively low traffic line here, on the order of five hundred cars a day. This is a quarter of Rarity Four Road, so in terms of the detour, I consider this to be relatively straightforward. One of the advantages of detours is that, especially when you live at the contractor to seven days, is it sort of forces them to get in and get out. If you left them all over the road, they can add what they need to do, have a short window of time, where they don't need to worry about maintaining traffic through the project. That generally helps speed things up, and oftentimes we see better bid places than a scenario. With respect to the project itself, as Roger said, this is a large culvert replacement. Existing structure is on the order of sixty, seventy, or low. These get selected as candidates for this program by our reach engineer, based on condition and based on other things, such as the historical occurrence of overtopping the road. I think Roger's correct, I think somewhere in the vicinity of twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we did have it at the top of the year, which is quite a student, one of the more interesting pieces of design, which is that after we take the hole and put the pipe around, our city will raise the difference between the road between one and three feet. So not only is the pipe being oversized from three feet to eight feet, but we're going to pick up the road on the order of one to three feet as well. What that does is, especially during high-temperature summer rain events, advise that additional internal capacity sleeve on a large roof above the roof. There are some other ancillary drainage improvements associated with the project, in addition, replacement of a couple of driveway pipes. In general, in terms of a large culvert replacement for highway coverage of the Main DOT, this is very standard, this is very straightforward. They will need to be out of there by our paving cutoff date, which this project will be in circles of twenty-two. Cutoff is the first Saturday of October, or Saturday of October twenty-two, I believe on October first. So they can choose their forty-five day window anytime after the entry window begins, then they have to continuously close down, and when we're within that forty-five days, they close the road for seven days. That's the general review of the project. Any questions specific to the detour, or specific to the type of cause of the project? Any questions? Thank you.
The detour program, to get set up, obviously, that Forest Avenue access is highly accessed by our home residents. Has the detour been taken into consideration for their traffic, too? As far as locations of travel and work and whatnot?
To answer your question specifically, there aren't any additional considerations for that? But that makes sense, there will be essentially through access up to where the closure is. The closure is very important, the roads and work of this project are only five hundred and fifty feet long, so there's nothing pretty big traffic entering on Forest Avenue from the north or the south and going essentially all the way up to the barricade to leave. They just won't be able to go through for that seven day window, that's it.
As far as that is the detour, what we try to do with detours, when they hit a charge on one hundred ways, so low traffic, usual signs go way through on our turn just now, so there are other core ways of low traffic, and those are those who's doing it.
Chris?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sheriff Gillen.
Sheriff Sean Gillen is here this evening to present to council on the Roosted County Sheriff's Department. Recommendation is that council hears from Sheriff Sean Gillen in his presentation of information to council.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Sean Gillen, for sheriff. So tonight I was asked to come here and speak about a proposal for taking over on Forest Avenue. I'd like to start off by telling you, I know I should inform and advocate to take over your PD. I was asked to do a proposal, and I did one, and I'm going to tell you why I don't normally do them unless I have a lot of correspondence with the town. But I'm a little gun shy, because what happened to Pam here, closed the doors on me and caused my department a lot of stress. I'm now picking up all of their calls, and our calls, too. So knowing some of the problems that you're having getting officers here to work, having worked here in the town from September to January ourselves, I was naturally concerned that it's human, and that's another problem for me. So I did do the proposal. It's not for twenty-four hour service, because we don't do twenty-four hour service. However, it's for sixteen or eighteen, generally, the section that's working that particular. So you have a proposal in front of you, if you have any questions, be free to answer the court.
Just one moment, I guess, clarification for your side. Sheriff, are they here?
Oh, sorry. Sounds like they're coming over here.
We, so to hear you write, you're not recommending that we do this, as far as with the Sheriff's Department.
I'm not. Let's just say that I would rather not, but if there is no other way, then I would be willing to do that. We help out the town, but I mean, I believe the town, this town wants to keep their PD from what I gather. You know, if the town didn't want to keep their PD, then I would recommend maybe going with the proposal. Now, there's no, and it follows the legislation and what's going on in federal and state, you know that they're trying to get rid of qualified immunity. If they get rid of qualified immunity, you will have a harder time finding a lot of persons to work here than you do now. This is, this proposal is not for my benefit, it's to help you. If you want my help, then I will help you. I'm your sheriff. If you reach out to me and you need something from me, then I will help you, but with that means. But if you want a proposal, if you want me to take over, then I will work with you to do that. But I mean, for me to find three deputies to take over, it may be just as difficult as it is for you to find a person that works here as well. I will tell you that it does put a strain on us with, when you're running short, that you're asking us to help, assist, but that's just the nature of it, I guess. There's other towns that are on the verge of closing as well, which concern me greatly. So if I was fully staffed and I was, you know, not worried about other towns closing, I may be a little more, have to jump on this, I guess. But I am willing to help you, I am willing to do whatever it takes. If you want a proposal, if you want to talk about a proposal, then I'm willing to help you.
Sean, you find it hard to find law enforcement replacements yourself, right?
I will say that I haven't had a hard time.
I've watched those around, around different counties and stuff like that. It's hard to find a strain, find new police officers.
Absolutely.
To join us, to serve us.
I will say that I have not experienced that so far. I had a hard time finding corrections officers. This is a whole different level, but if anybody wants to be corrected, I certainly would see it. But law enforcement, for some reason, I have been very fortunate, very lucky, but when I pick up a deputy, it's usually I'm picking up somebody from D U L or another town, which still puts a strain on the angles as well. So it's a double edged sword, right?
So you're the one that has trouble.
No.
No, I understand, I mean, I've watched, I've watched.
Yeah, no, and it's.
I've been in law enforcement myself, so I know exactly what you're going through.
That Roosted County is down twenty-one police officers throughout the county. Now, I'm not putting it in that same police, that's, all the PDs that are currently open there are down twenty-one police officers. That's a lot. So I am concerned about the town. I'm concerned that you're not going to be able to find people. I'm concerned that, you know, that you've made your luck and just want to close the doors. I mean, what's stopping you from closing your PD doors, other than, you know, the towns' people that want it? Bay area didn't want to do it either, in fact, they did it, and a lot of townspeople didn't even know they did it. But I didn't get a chance to even talk to the council, talk to anybody about doing a contract, a hybrid, doing something to help alleviate the strain against us and maybe keep the doors open on PDs. So I'm all about this proposal helping out what you need. But I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not running around advocating on taking you. I was approached, and I am known to help, just like if anybody came to me and asked me to help, then I would.
One of my concerns we've had before is the lack of twenty-four hour coverage. Part of the police officer, more of that reason, to keep it, so we get, get this way for our coverage that I believe dominates. So with your statement, the proposal that we see here, you're only about sixty feet maybe now.
So in order to do your twenty-four hour coverage, and you talked about full, I would have to take over completely and operate like it. We did it with limestone twice. There are problems when it comes to that. I'm running the PD, not the town, so if you have concerns, then there's, sometimes there's what it gets. I'm not saying that we would, I'm just saying that that's in the past, that's the town, because the town loses control over the, over the control of the PD. It's run by the county. So, but in order for twenty-four hours for us to do it, one, it would be more expensive, two, we would have to move in, just like a PD. So we would have to have a sergeant, we would have to have, as it is right now, you have, what we would do in this proposal is add three deputies, one on each section, and then they, that one deputy will work Fort Fairfield that entire shift, and then when the next shift came on, that another deputy will work Fort Fairfield, and then sergeant that's out there would be supervising or toward this area. And then at the after hours calls, the deputies that live close by here would be up there. That's basically what this proposal is about. It's not, I was not asked to do something anymore than just that, but it would be a lot more expensive for twenty-four. Talking to more people, and basically, we haven't been written. I doubt I can do it any cheaper than you.
Thank you for doing this work.
Yes, thank you. Questions? C D B G.
Proclamation twenty-one dash zero three. Background, the Create Development Block Grant Program was established in nineteen seventy-four and is a partnership of federal, state, and local governments, as well as private sector, nonprofit, and community efforts to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environments, and expanded economic opportunities, principally for low. principally for low and moderate income persons. The town of Fort Fairfield has received $11,485,617 in CDVG funds since 1984. Town projects funded with CDVG dollars include the clinic project, armory renovation, and Munson Pond Dam and Bridge Project. Discussion: National Community Development Association established a National Community Development Week 35 years ago. This year, April 13th through April 18th, has been designated Community Development Week. The proclamation proclaims the week of April 5th through April 9th, 2021, as Community Development Week throughout the town of Fort Fairfield, and gives special thanks and recognition to all the participants whose hard work and devotion to the neighborhoods and their low and moderate income residents to help ensure the quality and effectiveness of the Community Development Block Grant Program. The recommendation is Town Council sign proclamation 21-03, Community Development Week. We recently received an application to serve on the Fort Fairfield Economic Development Board for Mr. Reginald St. Pierre. The Fort Fairfield Economic Development Board currently has a vacancy left by Edith Hellstrom, who resigned in 2020, just prior to her term ending. If appointed, Mr. St. Pierre's term, three years, would begin immediately and end June 30th, 2023. Recommendation is council appoints Mr. St. Pierre to the Economic Development Board for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023. 2021 is the end of the five-year period for the Fort Fairfield Economic Development Board that was put into place in the original board bylaws. I have received and shared with council the letter from the Vice Chair, Ronald Chauver, for the board's continued commitment to the town. Recommendation is council votes to renew the Economic Development Board for another five years for the board's statement of commitment. On February 17th, 2021, three bids were opened at 1,600 hours. All bids met all requirements set forth in the RFP. The summary of the bids was as follows. PNM Construction: $24,365. Buck Construction: $22,465. And Bopres Construction: $49,680. We were able to discuss the project in detail with representatives from each company, who were also able to provide some insight in detail on what their plans for the project's completion looked like. It is our recommendation to accept the bid from Buck's Construction. While this was the lowest bid, Buck's also demonstrated a great deal of experience with similar projects and had a great plan to move forward with the project, and has time and crews ready to begin the project very soon. There are several ways this project could be funded. We could take this amount from several of our reserve lines. This would zero out at least two of those accounts. We also have requested and received proposals from several local banks for low-interest loans. These loans payments could be taken from our current budget and next year's budget very easily and would continue to allow our reserve accounts available for unexpected expenses. We recommend seeking a loan to cover the cost of this project. It is essential that we complete this project as our current setup does not allow for storage of all other equipment properly. With the addition of the tanker, which will be put into service in the coming months, we will have even less space. This project allows us to make better use of our current space at a much lower cost than building a new structure to house and protect the equipment we have. The recommendation is council allows the town manager to accept the bid from the bank that council approves at tonight's council meeting, and we will open up the bank for a PPE.
Received 392021.
Loan amount: $22,465. This is from a Rusick Savings and Loan. A three-year annual payment loan, three annual payments of $7,767.09, with a total interest of $836.28, with an interest rate of 1.85%. At the five-year, would be five annual payments of $4,752.31, total interest cost of $1,296.57. The interest rate would be 1.90%. Seven-year annual payment loan would be seven annual payments of $3,504.55, with a total interest cost of $2,066.82. The interest rate would be 2.25%. A three-year monthly payment loan, 36 monthly payments at $641.99, total interest cost $646.48, with an interest rate of 1.85%. A five-year monthly payment loan of 60 monthly payments, $392.78, total interest cost $1,101.75, with an interest rate of 1.9%. And a seven-year monthly payment loan of 84 monthly payments of $289.30 a month, total interest cost $1,836.55, with an interest rate of 2.25%. And that's Rusick Savings and Loan.
Next bid received, March 12. From Catadon Trust Company.
Loan amount of $22,465. First rate option one is a three-year term, a fixed interest rate of 1.94% per annum. Option two, five-year term, a fixed interest rate of 2.29% per annum. Option three, seven-year term, a fixed interest rate of 2.54% per annum. The bank will accept repayment as follows. Option one, three-year term, annual installments, including principal and interest in the approximate amount of $7,784.96, will be payable beginning April 30th of 2022. Option two of the five-year term, annual installments, including principal and interest in the approximate amount of $4,810.92, will be payable beginning April 30th, 2022. And option three of the seven-year term, annual installments, including principal and interest in the approximate amount of $3,548.48, will be payable beginning April 30th, 2022. Does council have questions?
These are the only two, correct?
We only have the two bids. If you, if you so choose not to take from the reserve accounts.
So I would like to comment on this. So we just sat here, we listened to, you know, a lot of people speak about the way that they feel, you know, the budget or the taxes are high, or, you know, because of the bailout. In my opinion, I'm reading this paper and I'm saying, you know, I'm reading that currently the, you know, the wall needs to be replaced because currently setup does not allow for storage of our equipment properly. So there's funds available in the reserve accounts. And I look at it as one of those things in departments that see, you know, that they need to use those funds for the, this wall. Then I think that those funds should be used before we take out any more money, before we borrow any more money, before we incur any more debt. I think we have other things that we need to deal with at this point in time, and we don't think that taking any additional loans, in my opinion, is the right thing to do.
Is this wall fall under state fire marshal?
It's in the plan.
And if we probably, in some ways, don't do this wall, we force eventually because of state laws?
Well, we may have, we may just have to build a new building, and that's what chief and deputy chief are trying to prevent happening.
Right, so now that we do a darn to hell, applying to the state law regulations is going to force us in a situation that we don't want to be in in future.
Right, but I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm saying we shouldn't borrow any money to do it.
Right.
I think that in my household, if I have certain things that need to be done, if I have a savings account, I may need to pull from that before I take out another loan, especially if there are some things going on that I need to deal with first at this point in time.
I agree with the reserve account.
We had the reserve, recommended the reserve of local homes. And we do have enough in the reserve?
I would like to say that they take funds from the reserve account if they wish, right?
I'll second that.
On March 17th, 2021, at $1,600, the two bids received for the 1992 Pierce Area Ladder Truck were opened in the council chambers. The first bid was for $101.01, and the second bid was for $3,750. Although neither of these bids met the posted minimum bid amount, Chief Browning is recommending accepting the highest bid of $3,750.
What's the value of PD 1?
Uh, well, it's been out to bid about six different times.
And this is the highest?
This is the highest bid we've ever received, yes.
What would you like to see?
Um, I think Chief Browning's recommendation is the correct recommendation to accept the $3,750 bid. Seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred, we were hoping to get seventy-five hundred.
We were talking Darren last year for his parts outside. That motor was worth quite a bit of money, I thought it was delayed. Didn't you guys put that in? You think, you think the parts should work more than the $3,750? Especially with the price of steel we have, whatever you're saying?
I think the truck is key beyond, you know, using any of this steel often. Uh, the engine has some considerable leaks, I think would be questionable. Uh, since this truck went out for auction, we've got Mettler's and Eric's bear snow blower, which is what the engine is, it came out of. In my opinion, to keep from having too much stock sitting around. If it were me, I'd keep it. Do we have a motion? I'll second it for the sake of discussion. No, I mean, I'm looking at this project and the potential ability to truck, to sell it to another community, the amount of money that would take to put it up in the coal would be unreasonable. And I, I am on this one a greater fear. I think, I think take what we can get out of it. Different resources.
We recently received notice that Catadon Trust Company has donated $500 to the Fort Fairfield Fire Rescue Department to assist with the cost of personal protective equipment. This money will assist the department in being able to purchase much-needed PPE. Placing the funds in the PPE line E-01-06-05-45 will help to alleviate the constant cost of personal protective equipment. For Title 30-A, MRS-A subsection 5654, states that a conditional gift for any specified public purpose offered to a municipality may be accepted or rejected by its legislative body. The recommendation is that council accepts the $500 donation from Catadon Trust Company and place the funds in line E-01-06-05-45. The following is a list of properties that became tax-acquired on March 9th, 2021, for 2018 taxes and total amount due on each property as of 3/10/2021. Heirs of Archie Holton, 41 Center Street, total taxes due $1,387.80. The assessed value is $14,280. The minimum bid recommendation is $2,500. Danielle Karen and Rodney York Jr., 107 Riverside Avenue, total taxes due $1,487.36. The assessed value is $15,670. The minimum bid recommendation is $2,500. Kevin Benson, Eight Pool Drive, total taxes due $5,829.38. The assessed value is $95,820, and the recommendation is that town retains ownership. My recommendation from our tax collector is that we put these properties out for bid with a minimum bid on each property. I do have certified mail receipts from all owners and have spoken with the owners of A, and they are not interested in the property. B, I have spoken with Ms. Karen, and she has made no attempt to, no attempt to pay taxes. I do not have a phone number for Mr. York, but they have the same mailing address. And C, I have left messages for Mr. Benson with no response. We have also attempted to purchase the property from Mr. Benson, and he has not responded. I am attaching a copy of each map, map card, and tax detail. Recommendation is to authorize the treasurer to put A and B properties out to bid with minimum bids, as stated, and for the town to retain ownership of property C.
What is the plan being if we retain ownership?
88th Street, that's for the recti department.
Is there any, yeah, like, bill? Is there any, uh, like abilities as far as as many properties exist?
Um, for, for any of these properties?
Yeah.
I, that would be up to the person who.
So we wouldn't be what I do after we tax acquire.
They're all hazardous.
That question, why would the town be interested in the pool?
It is a building that will need to come down. It's really, it doesn't have any value in being repaired. We've had discussions with the Water and Sewer District, who went in several times for flooding in the basement of the building and the mold and all the issues in the building. Um, and so we were wanting to tear it down for the parking lot that we don't have a safe place for our citizens that use our facilities over there for the pool, um, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, the skating rink in the wintertime. There's no place for them to safely use that facility other than the spot that's out front, um, on eighteen Community Center Drive.
Is that an apartment building?
It was, it has not been in use for a very long time.
Yeah, it's been quite a while since I've been down the street.
It's been abandoned for a long time.
You're in, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
All?
Aye.
No?
No.
Interest rate for two thousand twenty-one, Senator.
The delinquent tax rate has been set by the state of Maine at six percent maximum for two thousand twenty-one real estate and personal property taxes. This rate would become effective on March first, two thousand twenty-two. The higher rate often encourages taxpayers to pay taxes in a timely manner versus having to pay a high interest rate. At this time, I'm asking the members of town council to approve the new interest rate set by the state of six percent for the two thousand twenty-one real estate and personal property taxes. The recommendation from the tax collector is that council votes to accept the six percent interest rate for delinquent taxes for the two thousand twenty-one real estate and personal property taxes.
Second.
Motion, you have a second. Any discussion?
I just wondered if I could a little bit on this, that if you are part of the tax club, then you have an opportunity to make payments versus being charged a six percent interest rate for, would have been passing by. So you can avoid this by using the tax club.
More applause, I would like one.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Listen. Your number nine, two hundred and twenty. What's your score? Check it off before we get to it. Minutes of February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes on February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Your motion is second, we check the minutes, we're set to move. You're in, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Listen.
Aye.
I'll also go back. Now, wars.
Ward nineteen, an amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents was completed on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The checking account balance as of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one was one million five hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-three cents, and Machias Savings was at five thousand dollars. Ward twenty, in the amount of three hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred ninety dollars and eighty-eight cents, was completed on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The checking account balance as of March fourth, two thousand twenty-one was one million nine hundred nine thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and six cents, and Machias Savings was at five thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept Ward number nineteen for a hundred forty-three thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Ward number twenty for three hundred eighty-five thousand two hundred ninety dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion, you have a second. You're in, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Listen. You have a decision?
The background from Darren Hanson, Public Works Director. The Public Works foreman currently uses a two thousand one Chevrolet twenty-five hundred pickup with one hundred and seventy-three thousand miles to complete daily tasks. This truck is also used as a fill-in for plowing parking lots, drifting and checking to see if roads are in need of sand or plowing, so as to keep miles and hours down on our heavy equipment and labor costs as low as possible by checking the roads to make sure the crew is needed. Discussion, I would like to purchase a two thousand fifteen GMC twenty-five hundred from the state auction so as to have a more reliable vehicle. The recommendation is town council authorizes Public Works to spend up to fourteen thousand five hundred dollars with seven thousand five hundred dollars from account E dash zero one dash zero eight dash twenty-five dash forty and seven thousand from account E dash zero one dash zero eight dash zero one dash zero five at the state auction to replace the two thousand one Chevrolet twenty-five hundred. And the photos of that are in your pocket.
What's the mileage on the two thousand one fifteen Jeep? It's a hundred and thirty-five. Does it come with a plow attached, like, on? It does not. So it's gonna have to add. The pickup has some repair needs. I, I think that once everything is done, the, the other ones will come out of a normal expense account, but I think we'll have the truck completely painted, rigged, around twenty thousand dollars for two thousand fifteen three-quarter ton pickup. Uh, we haven't seen the truck yet. When we travel to a vessel, we want to know if it's, uh, we've been dealing with the gentleman down there for a few years now, and he's, he's really looking at us giving actually the description of the vehicle and how he feels that it's huge. Have you ever considered, uh, looking at a, uh, another model, like, for instance, a one-ton where you're plowing some of the roads in the war, probably not with the clouds and streets and stuff? That possibly a one-ton might do longevity lines a little better than? Uh, we, we have, we actually bought two last year at the auction. One is currently out on the road every day, it plows the park, a lot of the community center. Uh, these trucks have a dual purpose and they get a lot of miles. Uh, the truck that I currently use, it has around twenty thousand miles a year on. Uh, so to use a one-ton for that, we might have to go the other way and kind of, you know, the roads that are tossed even on a ton, this type of road pickup. Uh, the, I'll give you a little more background. The reason why we're looking to purchase this pickup out of the expense account is because in the past, uh, past management, when they go out and check the roads, the manager didn't go to check the roads, supervisor didn't go to check the roads, the crew went out, the wheelers, and checked the roads. And what we do now, and the reason why we put so many miles on this pickup is because we go check the roads before the, see if the crews are even. So it's made a big difference and we feel that the savings in the salaries and the saltless hand line should help the payments for the purchase of these things. These are working vehicles. Yeah, it's, uh... Like a diesel or is it gas? It is not, it's six-liter gas. Diesel, you don't think would, would, uh, pay the difference for? I would certainly consider a diesel and then the cost and the availability, they're hard to come by, so that's kind of like. That, that truck right there, if you go to a local dealer, one of my employees just purchased a two thousand fifteen and they paid forty thousand dollars for a new, you know, for you, so. That, it's really down to price and availability of that sort of vehicle that works. Well, this would be, one of the accounts that you pull out of that reserve, part of the money, um, I don't know, we've received here, George, money off the truck that property, is that same money in that area that we could use off that? It, it is, I would rather use that equipment for future heavy equipment, it's similar to the truck. Like, oh, we wasted that, right? We, we did, but always looking forward to the future. Upgrade, replace.
How often do the auctions happen for these trucks?
Uh, currently, it's, it's just a, it's a continuous auction. They're, they're not open to public. Uh, when we go, we just basically agree on a price, we get a chance to look at it, it's a tender lead of deal. That pickup, we noticed come up, I think about a week ago, you know, we were on the fence, I wanted to take some time, it, it needs some repairs, so I wanted to price up worst-case scenario of what it was gonna be, think we get the, the truck back from service. We just got all that information together, I'm, I'm sorry about the late hours, about the late handle, but just all work out that way, we have an opportunity. If we pass on a truck or somewhere else, who knows when the next one comes on that will be, you know, clean and reliable.
The reason I ask is because, of course, you're requesting this because of the plowing, stone plowing, dirt and so forth, and seeing that we're at the end of our season. Would it be better to wait and just shut it off maybe for better deal, if we're not using any repairs?
No, the repairs to that truck, really, we can do all in-house, it's only twelve hundred dollars. Whenever we buy one, we pay, we keep our pickups all in one power. Uh, the, uh, the two thousand one that we're talking about replacing needs more work than what's worked to put into, so we really need to consider moving on with that. Like I said, I don't think that you can find a better deal than what, what they're offering on this one. No, the prices, very good. Now, I'd rather say price on. Basically, the repairs that are needed, it, it has a couple of manifold bolts that are broken and made. We, like I said, we priced up worst-case scenario, which is twelve hundred dollars, and then we would have labor, our labor involved, but there's actually, uh, an aftermarket part that they came up with that will repair those bolts, and we may not have to replace the heads at all, we may be able to take this truck and move it to ninety-two dollars.
So you're correcting your responsibility to change your heads?
Yes, that's correct. What a lot of people don't realize still with a hundred and seventy-three thousand miles on that old one, twenty-five hundred, you add it in a running time, there doesn't count two days before, uh, the vehicle will be three times out. Very twice. That vehicle doesn't get shut off. Yes, sir, that, that vehicle we bought at the state auction for thirty-five hundred dollars with the plow. The plow is probably still valued at twenty-five hundred, but we will keep up the vehicle that we're then auctioning off, that is, we, we accept our money for it.
Any motion? You have a motion, second.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Captain. You're in, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Go up.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Go up.
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 Aye.